We could all stand for the pledge, we'd greatly appreciate it.
... pledge allegiance to the law, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask everybody to stay standing for just a minute. We lost a resident, Dennis Alderman, who was a deacon out at one of the churches and built one of the churches, so if we could have a moment of silence for his passing yesterday.
Russell, if you could please call roll.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Breckus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Quasi judicial. Who's gonna pick it up? Russell or Keith?
Sure, Mayor. The first main item on the agenda is quasi judicial in nature. As you're aware, Florida courts has determined that when items are quasi judicial in nature, you are serving as jurors and the applicant has to prove by competent substantial evidence that the evidence that they present meets the requirements of the code for their request to be granted. You only have one quasi judicial item on the agenda today, which is a waiver of plat. It's item number three, which is 13-201 Loray Road Waiver of Plat. At this point in time, because it's quasi judicial and the courts require, we're gonna swear in anyone who wishes to speak on this matter. But anyone who desires to speak on this waiver of plat, please stand, raise your right hand to be sworn in.
You're gonna wanna speak on this matter, ma'am?
Ma'am, did you wanna speak?
Are you gonna wanna speak on this matter? Okay.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
The rules of quasi judicial procedure are written on the agenda in the town's code. In the interest of time, we're happy to read it if anyone in the audience desires us to read it. If not, we will dispense with that reading formality and incorporate that by reference. I see, I assume the applicant's representative is here. Perfect. Hi. If you could please just come to the podium and once again reintroduce yourself in that you've been sworn in and you know why you're here.
Good evening, members of council. I am Elizabeth Strugdisian. I am here for police land surveyors. We represent Anthony DeFidi, the owner of the property.
And Elizabeth, you've been sworn in, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff Cadence to introduce the staff report.
Thank you, good evening. This is a fairly straightforward, is this coming through? A fairly straightforward waiver of plat application. This is a 4.7 acre parcel with 330 feet of frontage on Loray Road. And the applicant's proposing to split it in half, kind of up the middle, with each lot having approximately 165 feet of frontage on Loray Road. There's no canal on this, on the north side, so they all have direct access. Both lots would have direct access to the street. The lots, as proposed, would comply with all code requirements. The only issues here are that there are some improvements that encroach onto the proposed lot line, the common lot line between the two properties. That would be a portion of the driveway as it widens near the, to the side of the house, and a carport. It's like a fabric carport that's there. So as a recommendation of a condition of approval, we are recommending that the applicant have 90 days, I tend to take it as that part, but we can let you tonight, but 90 days in order to give the applicant time to do this and get it re-surveyed so that we can verify that it's been taken care of. So we recommend approval, we have no other issues with this. The utilities have all submitted letters of no objection. The applicants paid the park impact fee for the extra lot, and that's our recommendation.
Thank you. Elizabeth, do you have any questions of Jeff at this time? Would you like to make a formal presentation?
No.
Okay, the applicant has waived. Does the applicant stipulate to the conditions in the staff report?
He is fully aware, yes, sir.
Okay, the applicant has stipulated to the conditions in the staff report. At this time, Russell, will you read in the resolution by title and we'll open it up to the general public?
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving waiver of plat application number WP-20-18 to subdivide approximately 4.7 net acres of property into two lots of approximately 2.38 and 2.32 net acres, generally located on the north side of Loray Road, approximately 700 feet west of Southwest 130th Avenue. Legally described as the south half of tract 22, less the south 40 feet thereof in section two, Township 51 South, Range 40 East, Everglades Sugar and Land Company subdivision, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book two, page 39, of the Public Records of Miami-Dade County, Florida. Said lands now lying, being, and situate in Broward County, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Does any member of the public wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Jeff, do you have any concluding remarks?
No.
Seeing none, staff comments are closed. Elizabeth, do you have any concluding remarks? Seeing none, applicant comments are closed. Council, at this time, under the Jennings Rule, we need to ask if anyone's had any ex parte communications concerning this matter?
Not I.
No.
No.
Okay, seeing no ex parte communication, at this time, Mayor, I'm gonna turn it over to you for full council deliberation. Remember, in accordance with the terms of our current ordinance in effect, because this is quasi judicial in nature, requires a unanimous vote of the Town Council.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions? Steve?
No, I was just gonna say I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Any other comments, questions, or anything? Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's the only, yes.
Okay. Mayor, public comment is next. There's only one speaker tonight, David Kazinsky. Public comments for three minutes each. That is the only public comment tonight.
Good evening, council. David Kazinsky, 6411 Holliday Trail. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association, just to make a general announcement that at our annual election meeting will be held on March 28th. Meeting will be called at 7:00 PM. Elections will take place at 7:30. Currently, our proposed directors will be Said Taitarani, Rosina Meripoti, Eldita Herrera Garcia, Sandra Farah, Francis Cordero, Annie Ruiz Chang, and Tony Brown. Of those, there will be five members that will be elected as directors. Then we have the executive board, Treasurer Judy Parker, Secretary Isoldi Cahill, Vice President Velma Lopez, and Vice President David Kazinsky. I just think that this past board has turned over, turned around the HOA. We have a positive balance in our bank account. Our publication, the Sunshine Ranches Wagler, is paying for itself, which is one of my goals when I sought the presidency. So I'd like to encourage all of our members to come out, and thank you for your time. Have a great meeting.
One final public speaker. Gabe Chapels.
Wouldn't resist. First of all, I'd like to state that this is the season when we're now having lots of lambs on the ground, and I've already had to shoot one of my adult females because not a coyote, somebody's dog got her. And she had her back leg pretty much destroyed, so we had to destroy her. People need to keep their dogs. Our fences are for sheep. They can't get through it. They're either crawling underneath, digging underneath. And last year, we lost 24 head. They went in and they just knocked them off. Bam bam bam, it's a sport. They don't eat them, they're not looking for food, they just chase them and kill them as they go. And so I just want everybody to know in the, in the town, I don't wanna kill somebody's dog, but legally, I can. Sheep are protected, and if you have a dog, attack them, you can kill the dog. And so, please, keep your dogs confined and don't let them run loose in the neighborhood. The other thing is, we are having a terrible dump problem, and I haven't figured out why. I don't know whether or not it's because after the storm, everybody put all their debris out and they just piled it up on the easements. And if it was vacant land, they took advantage of that and they piled it all up, but it's continuing, especially on vacant land. And we've tried to clean it up, and the town is trying to do something about it, but it's gotten really bad, especially in Sunshine Ranches. So hopefully, with a lot of signs, "Do not dump," and maybe we can get photographs, because we're not supposed to interfere with them when they're dumping. So we can get photographs of their license plates, then maybe we can put a stop to this. But it's construction material, it's regular tree material, garbage, you name it, and they're dumping it. So I just wanna make everybody aware here that it is becoming a really bad deal, and we need to stop it. Thank you.
All right, that was the last speaker. Board reports, anybody for board reports?
Listen, I'm old, you have to bear with me on this one. The Historical Society has put their first couple of ads on the website, on the town website, so anybody who's interested that is a resident or rents properties such as barns, that wanna advertise, they can either contact me, and it's $100 and an additional 50 to have them moved over, you know, and go to their website. So we'd like to get you on there, so people will give you the business and know that you're from the town. Outside, if you don't live in the town or rent in the town, you cannot advertise. So be aware of it, it is up and running, and we would definitely like everybody to get on there. Thank you.
Any additional board reports, or that's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing no additional board report, council member comments. Who wants to go first?
I will.
Okay, Gary, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Just some brief announcements I'm going to make regarding town events coming up. First one is, this one's kinda important, Water Matters Day coming up this Saturday. I know Steve will probably talk about that, from 93 at Tree Tops Park. This is probably the fifth time I've mentioned it, and it's worth it, and so I suggest, everybody, if you haven't been, please go. And then the following day is daylight savings time, just, you know, set your clocks forward. And I understand the Florida Legislature is gonna do something about that, from what I've read, where the state might be on permanent daylight savings time coming up. So, which I'm happy to see. So we'll see, we'll see if that happens, how that works. Our hazmat, which was this Saturday, has been canceled, and I believe the next one, Andy, is in May, is that correct? Yeah. And Andy, if you could allude to how that transpired, I would appreciate that. On Monday, the 12th, 7 to 9:00 PM, there is a Education Advisory Board sign, it's called, with a wood plank, where you paint your own wood plank. Fundraisers are going on at the barn. You need to call Town Hall first, I believe the cost is $40, and this is scheduled for Monday, the 12th. On Thursday, there is another educational advisory, it's Thursday, the 15th, excuse me, at Land Lovers Restaurant, 7:00 PM poker night for the Education Advisory Board. On the 22nd, our next meeting in two weeks, the property appraiser, Marty Care, who we all know and love, is gonna have his office here, going over any questions about property, property appraisal, renewal, homestead renewal, anything that you have regarding that, and any questions regarding agricultural exemptions. So if you have it, you know, now's a good time to come by and ask the questions.
Search at 4:30, better.
4:30. Did I say 4:30? I'm sorry.
I think so.
All right, 4:30. 4:30 in the afternoon is when that happens. The council meeting is at 7:00 that night. Last thing I have on the agenda here is, we have an Easter egg hunt in the Rolling Oaks Park, put on by the Rolling Oaks Civic Association. It's on the 24th. It begins for the little kids, the real little ones, at 12:00 noon. Bring your basket. We have 5,000, over 5,000 eggs. We have golden eggs, those are the, the one everybody hunts for, and everybody has a great time. There's gonna be a light continental breakfast served, starting at 11:00 in the barn. It's one of our, the association's main events of the year. It's townwide, everybody's invited, so I urge you all to please attend. If you especially have little kids, they really, really enjoy it. And I think last year, we had about 400, 400 kids, so it was, it was a lot of fun. And I'll wrap it up with that, Mayor.
Okay. Who wants to go next? Dee?
I will. I'll go next. We'll save the best for last.
Okay, Freddie's last.
Oh. I just have a couple things I'd like to talk to you about. We have the Pioneer Days coming up, and I had pulled a lot of names up. Last year, we had, no other than Marvin Holt was honored in this, and completely ecstatic and absolutely thrilled to be nominated. So with doing so, I had asked Andy to do some research for me, and he did, and the name I came up with this year is Noel Hollingsworth. Noel has been a big supporter, him and his wife, in this town way before we became a town, and politically involved. And so I think it would be a big honor to him to be able to go to the Pioneer Day and, you know, tell his little stories, 'cause that's basically what it's about. You write something about yourself and your involvement and everything. So that's who I'm recommending this year for Pioneer Days. Do you agree on that, guys? Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good. Okay, my second thing is not maybe as pleasant, but I have an issue...
Let me throw you a bone. Parade on Saturday.
Oh, we are gonna be in the parade, yes?
Yeah, it's not our parade.
Cooper City has a huge, huge, huge parade. I mean, it is one of the biggest I've ever seen. And we're honored, Doug and I, to be able to be in this, but he is gonna do a little bit of babysitting, because I'm taking my two grandkids so they can throw candy out the back of the truck, and hopefully, they won't eat it all. Otherwise, you're really gonna be in trouble. So we will be doing that Saturday. The other thing...
Matters Day.
And after we leave there, we're going to take and switch vehicles, and we're gonna run on over and do Water Matters Day with December and see all the wonderful things that she's done. So that is something I'm looking forward to, too. I did it last year, and we had a great time there. We met some wonderful people. Do you remember the little boy we met?
Yeah, we had amazing...
Incredible child, I mean, absolutely incredible. I mean, I look forward to seeing him in 2030 as the President of the United States, 'cause that's where he was going. He was, he was absolutely incredible. The other thing is, I had the opportunity, as a Sunshine Ranch resident, to read the newsletter. And in there is absolutely 100% incorrect information. Information was given to whatever amount of residents we have in that area, whether it be 600 or 700 residents, that they can put their bulk on someone else's property. That is absolutely not true. So with that being said, and I did check, and I've spoke to Andy Code, I would like to see something put back in that newsletter for the next month. If you're not quite sure how to word it, you can get with Code. Robert would be more than happy to give you the ordinances and the laws and the rules, but you cannot put things in there that you're not 100% or you have legal paper to show that this is the rules. I've had an abundance of phone calls and complaints from residents saying that, you know, "Well, I didn't know we could do that," or they would be calling and saying, "You're telling everybody..." Well, no, it's not the town, it's Sunshine Ranch's newsletter. I believe that was in the February issue. Okay? So if we could get that corrected and for further use, if you're going to put something in there and you're not quite sure, Andy's a phone call away, and I'm sure he can put you in the right direction, okay? Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of things, I think, pretty quick. I was gonna talk a little bit about Water Matters, but I think we've, I think we've covered that topic, so I will, it's a great, it's a great event.
You can't say enough about it.
It's a great event, so encourage everybody to go to that.
You can tell how many years we've done it.
I think we've done it 15 years, is that what it is? 15, 15 years?
At least 15 years.
So, yeah, it's, you know...
The best display.
We do, you know, December and the volunteers that help her, and the nurseries, all right, I'm gonna go into it, you know? All right, I'm gonna go into it. So, you know, December, all the work she does, the volunteers that she recruits to help her to do it, the local businesses that donate plant material and that to make it happen. And if you're over there, you're gonna find this little oasis in the shade with the trickling water coming through, the babbling brook, the birds will be chirping above this all, and that will be a little piece of Southwest Ranches placed right in the middle of Tree Top Parks. So it's, it's at a great place to get a good education on really the importance of water. It's a great place to meet some great folks, as Dee mentioned, some great kids doing some amazing things, and it's also a great place to pick up some free trees that are native to Florida and that will, will help preserve the water here.
I'm gonna jump in and join you a second, and also bring your dogs.
You can bring your dogs. I do have one, one piece of advice, is get there early, 'cause it is, it is crowded, and sooner you get there, the easier it is to park and all that kinda stuff.
You gotta bring your own poop bags, though.
I'm gonna leave that for your, your announcement. Or Mayor, you still have your announcement, you can cover that if you'd like to jump in there. All right, so Water Matters, great event. The dumping, I, there definitely has been an increase in dumping here recently, and I appreciate that that was brought up. I, you know, I'm sure there's a number of things that are contributing to that. I do think that as the economy picks up, if you'll remember back in, I remember when I first got on the council in 2006, this was one of the major issues that was around town, was dumping. And it was because the economy was going crazy and that people were doing things and they had the money to do things and stuff like that. So I think we're going back into that phase again, so we just, from a code standpoint and from a town standpoint, we have to watch out about that. Remember, the most important thing when, if dumping happens in the area, or you see it on your property or your neighbor's property, is please contact them right away to put in a police report for it. That's the critical and most important thing. Number one, it logs it for police so that we can start tracking down who's doing the dumping, and number two, it relieves them of any, the fees and penalties for having debris out there at the wrong time.
Steve, while you brought that up, if I could join in for just a second. I've got a question, I know if it's, the answer is from Robert, or Andy, or who, but in that scenario, I know that's their best defense, is to call and make a police report, but who picks up and who pays for that pickup? Andy, you know, if the homeowner makes a police report, and they're saying it's not there, they didn't dump it and it's there, and they make a police report, and it's an issue, and they call the town and I guess notify you of the town, obviously, it's gotta get picked up, but, you know, being what it is, how's that gonna work?
It's a case by case, depending on what it is and where it is, but there are situations where something's dropped out there, let's say on Town Right of Way, or something like that. We will send our, we will dispatch the contractors, our vendor out there to pick it up at town expense in those cases.
Okay. All right. Yeah, well, that's kinda, it's problematic, but it's still gotta get picked up, is what I was getting at.
At the end of the day, that, that costs our town money, so...
Yeah, yeah.
You know, whether it's in one way or another, it costs our town money, so it's to everybody's benefit to assist. Yeah, if you see that going on, as we said earlier in the meeting, don't intervene, but...
Get a picture.
Get your camera out and take some pictures, and let's see if we can start tracking this down and putting it to an end. The last thing I wanted to touch on was the, an update, and Andy, maybe you can provide an update on that, too. I'll give an update for what I'm aware of. The fire station out west, and we heard an update last night in the Drainage Committee on that, and it looks like it's moving forward, which is good, that they had a good, positive meeting. Looks like the, they'll be able to do the transition on the current property and not use Country Estates Fishing Hole Park, which is good. It's good. There is, there is one unsilver lining for me personally, was I already wrote my article about this event, and I was warning everybody that, that this is gonna be in Country Estates Fishing Hole Park, and so I'm trying to pull the brakes on that, but I don't know if it'll happen or not, so... I may be, I may be spreading rumors and disinformation out there. I may be putting some fake news out there unintentionally, so, but the good news is that it looks like it's gonna be...
Moving forward.
Moving forward and moving fairly quickly. Thank you.
Freddie?
Yeah, I just wanna follow the flow a little bit, but Steve said, I know we've had it happen in our neighborhood, but I think what we need to do to be neighbors, 'cause a lot of these people move in our town, they don't know what we are, who we're doing, what we are, so if you see somebody moving in, try to get over and tell them, "Look, you know, I got one in my neighborhood," and I did that recently, and, 'cause they don't know. They don't know we got a council that meets every night or what's going on, so let's be neighborly and try to talk to them.
Awesome.
All right. Be short and sweet and to the point. Founder's Parade, if you don't have anything else to do, or on your way maybe to Tree Tops Park, swing by Cooper City, it's on, what is that, 90th?
90th.
On 90th is the parade goes down, it goes, goes south from the, like the golf club shack there, there's a little restaurant there.
We meet at City Hall.
They meet at, we meet at Town Hall there, and then it goes south all the way, almost down to Sterling Road. So anyhow, those of you that wanna get out and see a nice parade, they have, they throw a great parade. But Tree Top Park Water Matters Day, you don't wanna miss it. If you've never been, you'll be absolutely astounded. It's a great event, educational, the kids have a good time, and if you participate and get your card stamped, you actually get to leave with some trees or plants or flowers or something of that kind. So anyhow, have a great time. Thank you all for coming out and attending our meeting, appreciate it. All right, so legal.
Sure, Mayor...
Sure, Mayor, I'll be brief. First, I think probably since the last meeting, we got some good news from the Supreme Court of the State of Florida in regards to Correction Corporation of America's case against the city of Pembroke Pines, and that the Supreme Court conclusively determined that Pembroke Pines is required as a matter of law to service the CCA site with water and sewer services. So, they claim that Pembroke Pines manifested the intent to service that property and as such, they are required to do so. As a result of that, there's a lot of new legal maneuvering going around. And I will keep you posted in the upcoming week what transpires. But I can assure you that motions will be filed furiously in the next couple of days that are sitting on my desk. Second thing is, we're still having tremendous issues relating to the fire truck and trying to repair it. We got very good response from the vendor after I threatened to sue them, that they would work with us to try to fix it. But apparently, that message has not come down from where that vendor is located in North Dakota or somewhere, wherever they're located, to the local vendors. So, the local vendors have no idea what we're talking about. So, we're trying to figure out now the best way to bridge the gap between all the parties to finally get the fire truck fixed once and for all. And that is something that we're diligently working on as well. In other items, so fire trucks... Today, the Broward County had a meeting of all cities, really all city attorneys, to discuss semi-automatic weapons and regulation of semi-automatic weapons, and actually probably all weapons if you ask someone in Broward. And it was a pretty healthy, lengthy debate amongst all the cities in Broward. Southwest Ranches was there solely to listen and to report back. Nothing was really determined except for the fact that there are two law firms vying for the opportunity to represent Broward County in challenging the state's regulations relating to firearms. One being Wyserota was requesting that all 31 municipalities give it $10,000 for it to represent them in a court action against the state. And then another outlet that's funded by Bloomberg from New York, who hired Big Law Firm, Proscow, Rose and another firm. And they combated Wyserota today by saying they would do it for free. Okay? Which led to another two hours of healthy debate. So, at this point, you know, again, I'm just gonna report back. There's nothing for us to do, nothing to do. But I will keep you posted as that debate continues to rage on. There's two more days left of the legislative session, maybe one day left of the legislative session, although they're going through the night tonight. We are currently in the budget. Sorry, Andy, I'm knocking these things out, but I spoke to Nelson an hour ago, made some calls. We're currently in the budget for a half a million dollar drainage project. That's actually really good news because although we were hopeful that this year would be a much bigger year because it's the governor's last legislative session really in office before his senatorial campaign, because of the unfortunate events that happened with Parkland, a lot of the budget went towards their new bill relating to guns and arming teachers, et cetera, that was passed yesterday. And as a result of that, a lot of the appropriation items were removed throughout the entire state. And so, we're very lucky and happy with Senator Book and our state reps, both Jenny and Stark, and their assistance in keeping those in the $500,000 in the budget. Other than that, I know that the next council meeting, I'll be able to give you a much greater update on where we're at with Pines. They are having an election next Tuesday. And a lot will change maybe in that city as well that maybe could lead us to resolution in all of our matters. That's it. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
One question for you.
Oh, yeah. I have one more thing too.
The property, the barn property that Guy claimed or whatever, where are we on that piece of?
It's a major problem. It's a major legal conundrum in how to deal with it that not even the courts know how to deal with. Because there was a lease pendants filed, we took title subject to a mortgage, and then there was a sale without notification to the town. So, we've been trying to figure out a way to get back before the judge. But we, in the same vein, don't wanna mess title up to the property because we don't wanna be liable for any damages that we caused through our own lease pendants on the property. So, it's being analyzed, but there's no real good answer there, which is why it's in a little bit of a legal quandary.
Quandary.
Quandary right now. As relates to the town, one other item, and thank you, Russell, for reminding me. As you all remember, we're working on getting our line of credit loan done to pay for the hurricane cleanup. And then we get back a 95%, maybe higher, 99%, whatever it is reimbursement from FEMA, as the case may be. In order to get the line of credit loan and everything into place and FEMA financing in place, we had to talk about the matter publicly some time ago after the hurricane at a public meeting, which we did. We spoke about it many times. Unfortunately, when we looked at the minutes, the minutes didn't reflect that we actually spoke about it. Okay? So, Russell got to re-listen to every meeting since the hurricane...
Lucky him.
To pull out the references where the line of credit and the funding and the reimbursement was stated. And he stopped on October 26th, when it was clearly stated that Stonegate Bank had been contacted to activate the existing emergency line of credit for which the town planned to reimburse itself for all FEMA and state-eligible category expenditures, as the town would be using all eligible town funds to pay for Hurricane Irma cleanup. Because that was not in the original minutes, we're now required to put it in the original minutes where it was supposed to be originally in order to get our funding. So, as such, I'm respectfully requesting a motion to amend the October 26, 2017 minutes to have that one line in there, which was stated at that meeting, which is required by the bank in order to give us our money.
I'll make a motion to amend the October 26 minutes to accurately reflect what we transpired in that meeting.
Second.
Good, Marty?
Yes, I wanted to just add a couple items. One, the fact that we were operating under declared state of emergency, emergency in accordance with our line of credit, which was all well-known at the time. Second is that we promised to repay such line of credit from reimbursements received from FEMA and the state of Florida. And third is that we will agree, all these are in the line of credit terms as well. We agreed to covenant to budget appropriate, any funding or debt service while we're waiting for reimbursement from FEMA and the state of Florida. So, all those items will cross the T, dot the I's, and enable us to get reimbursed. Some of the information in regards to the line or our expenditures incurred, now that we're on the topic, we've spent approximately $3 million to date. We expect to spend at least one more million dollars, maybe 1.5 million dollars, which would run about $4.5 million. And as Counselor Keith has indicated, the reimbursement process is anywhere from 75% to 100%. An important component of that, that we tried to get added to Nelson, is the fact, the PPDR, private property debris removal. The state portion of funding as it relates to PPDR has been denied to all municipalities in the entire state of Florida. That's only the state component, which can range from 2.5% to 12.5%. Our exposure there is anywhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 to $100,000. I don't have the final numbers, but it's something to consider. And Andy will have more discussions and Keith will have discussions moving forward regarding PPDR. And I'm excited with the town clerk motion and proposal tonight to simplify the process for the PPDR moving forward. That's all I have. Thank you.
We've got a motion in a second. You wanna call the question?
Sure.
Public comment? You wanna public comment on this matter? Go ahead, public comment.
Good evening, Council John Eastman, 188 Avenue. You know, through the years, I stressed keeping a reserve fund for this hurricane debris removal because we had it back during Wilma. We knew what was coming. And the mayor, during our trash negotiations, wanted to keep that money in the fund. And this was why. So, I'm just reminding you, you all belittled him. You made him look small for his idea. And he was right. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is now closed. Back to us. Any council comments? Seeing no council member comments, call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Administrative comment, unless you're done, Keith?
I am. Item eight.
Okay. Andy, while you do administrator comments, if you would address item 19?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. I just, I've actually drawn lines through a lot of the things I had, so it'll be relatively quick.
Okay.
Councilmember Bright Cruz had asked me to address the relocation of the fire station. We do have that as an agenda item, so if it's okay with you, I'd like to leave it for that, for that item. Councilmember Jablonsky had asked about the hazmat. We are in process of transitioning on the disposal. This is something that normally would be invisible to the residents. From the contract that we had with Sun Bergeron, which is, there's some feuding there, to Waste Pro, who's our collector now of our garbage, is also gonna be handling the disposal. And it was a communication issue within that handoff that caused the problem. So, it's unfortunately a one-time glitch. We won't let that happen again. But there's, some of the folks at Sun Bergeron, which the Sun assets were bought out by Waste Management, and they're not playing nice with Bergeron. So, there's some issues and some litigation there that I don't wanna comment on. So, we're trying to sidestep that and we're transitioning to Waste Pro on the disposal. And that's what complicated this one. Some good news, although we have some tis-dore items on the agenda tonight, that's for the next year, the current year's project over in Sunshine Ranches, just wanna let you all know, that will kick off effective Monday. So, we're getting ready to start on that. And the Sterling Road Guard Rail Project that we got funding from the state last year kicked off actually this week. There's some minor drainage improvements they're in the process of making. So, that project, we look forward to getting that done very quickly as well. The only other item, the mayor had mentioned item 19, and I just wanted to touch on that, get consensus. As you'll all recall, we had a lengthy discussion on the purchase of the town pickup truck at the last meeting. And the numbers within that item that you all approved showed a seven-year, 100,000-mile warranty for the truck. And staff made an error. The number that was in there for that was actually the five-year 100,000-mile warranty. And so, staff, because we don't expect to put 20,000 miles a year on this truck, sees the value and the benefit of the seven-year warranty. It's an additional $400 and change over what you had approved at the last meeting. And just based on the dollar value and the fact that it's certainly over my authority adding on to what you had all approved, I just wanted to get council consensus for us to spend the additional funds to correctly purchase the seven-year warranty.
You need a motion?
Yep. Well, he needs input. Is it okay? He wants to know if it's okay.
It's fine with me.
I'm okay with it.
If it's gonna break, it's gonna do it in those final two years, so let's get it.
All right. Keith, you wanna motion?
Yeah, you know, it's actually in the resolution you all passed, not to exceed number. So, I'm gonna wanna, what I'm gonna do if this meets council's approval is amend that resolution to reflect the additional $400. Because the text says seven years, but the dollar amount is off by $400. So, if there's just a motion to amend that resolution that was adopted the last council meeting, it's actually, because it passed, if someone on the prevailing side just says motion for reconsider and amending the title to add $400, that's all we need to do.
$450, please.
$450.
I'll make a motion to amend the previous...
I'm sorry. It's a motion to reconsider the resolution relating to the purchase of the vehicle and to amend the title and the body to add an additional $450.
I haven't had to remember something like this since I got married.
[laughing]
All right, let's give it a go. Let's give it a go here. I'll make a motion to amend, to reconsider and amend the previous motion and for the addition of 450, approximately $450 to the cost.
Okay, again, it's not afford, but you know, it's for the town, so I'll second.
Okay. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
You're welcome. All right. Russell, you're up to bat. Number nine.
A resolution of the town council, the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a lease agreement and a maintenance contract with Toshiba America Business Solutions, Inc., for three copier, printer, scanners, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment closed. Back to us. Any comments up here?
Yeah. Andy, can you just give kind of an overview of what this is? Have we gone full term and it's getting new equipment and just...
Actually, council member, if I may, I'd like to actually let Russell speak to this because he's worked on this item.
Perfect.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is just basically a resolution to renew or to seek a new contract, I should say, with our current provider. Just so happens that it's our current provider, Toshiba, for the provision of copiers for the administrative services area, the town clerk area, and also the front desk. The pricing is off a state contract. The great thing about the pricing is that because it's on state contract, we were guaranteed, you know, probably the best price you're gonna get. But it's also less than what we're currently paying right now.
Great.
So, three years later, and we actually got a better machine and better prices.
Excellent.
What's not to like?
Call the question.
Well, public comment.
Public, I thought I opened public comment. I thought I did, but okay. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Back to us. Got a motion in a second? We're good. You got an explanation? We're good. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. Call the question.
Well, public comment.
Public, I thought I opened public comment. I thought I did, but okay. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Back to us. Any comments up here?
Yeah.
Freddie, go ahead.
Is this now already budgeted?
Yes, we have sufficient rollover in excess of 800,000, 900,000. This is a piece of the pie. We gotta get moving on this project. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any others? Good. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Eleven. A resolution of the town council, the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order in the amount of $64,000, $65.00 with Erdman Anthony of Florida, Inc., for engineering services for Phase Four of the Florida, of the transportation surface and drainage, ongoing rehabilitation, tis-dore roadway improvements, excuse me, authorizing the execution of the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Back to us. Any additional questions here?
Same as I had before. Is it budgeted?
Is it? Marty?
Piece of the pie, Freddie.
Yes, you could see for the council communication, that would be page 62 of 109. Engineering Department has sufficiently adequately displayed this comp-
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Back to us, any additional questions here?
Same as I had before, is it budgeted?
Is it? Marty?
Piece of the pie, Freddie.
You could see for the council communication, that would be page sixty-two of 109. Engineering Department has sufficiently adequately displayed this component, and I failed to mention that a reason for the delay has been Hurricane Irma. So this is why we're playing catch-up on this project.
Call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor, items fourteen, fifteen, and, excuse me, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are all items that you all have requested.
Can we do twelve first, Keith?
Yeah, twelve first would be good.
Man, it's one of those nights. A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving and accepting a public right-of-way dedication along Southwest 130th Avenue, accepting the perpetual maintenance obligation of said public right-of-way, incorporating said right-of-way into the transportation and drainage, ongoing rehabilitation, Tisdore construction program, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the public right-of-way dedication and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is closed. Back to us.
Mayor?
Steve, go ahead.
Just a comment on this one. I hope that as the years continue and as we do more Tisdore, as Tisdore works its way through the entire town, I hope to see more of these. I applaud the folks on 130th for doing this. Just a little explanation on this. So when the town does the paving, we can only pave the public portion of the road. If the road is held privately, then it's up to the homeowner to do the repaving. And so what these homeowners have elected to do is to give the town the right-of-way so that the town can then have the right to pave it. It is more expense for the town, but for those residents, they're paying the same taxes as everybody else to have Tisdore put in place. They're paying the same taxes for the road maintenance, but as so long as they keep that right-of-way, the town cannot do those services. So even though it's more expense for the town, I applaud those residents for doing this. It allows the entire road to be paved and to provide, you know, a much better surface for that part of the town, and I'm sure will improve property values as well. Thank you.
I want to correct you. It's not a full-paved road. The last four people on the end have no interest.
Right.
Unfortunately.
I'm talking about this item here.
Yeah, yeah, no, that item, that road, that bigger road, it's the last four residents are not participating, but it's their choice.
Like I said, not everybody does.
Right, right.
But for the ones that do it, they get the benefit.
Agreed.
Yeah, but that frees them up too. Now, they're not responsible if anything happens. You know, it's on the town and not on them, so it's a real big benefit to them.
It is. All right.
Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Keith, now you can do your.
No, I mean, I'm thinking it is four homes. It's ridiculous. At some point, we should speak about this, maybe even special assessing them directly for the cost of the construction if they don't want to give it and, you know.
Do the paving and send them a bill?
We'll pave it and send them a bill.
I'll tell you that I personally think that that's a good approach because we need to do this for our town. And, you know, it is private, and it's not like a major bill. It would be something that would be assessed over 20 years, and those that, that's about the length of the benefit of the road is about 20 years. So basically, you are, you're spreading it out over the portion of the time that you would live there, and that's the way to pave the entire town.
Yeah, I just want to point out one thing. That's a cul-de-sac. It doesn't go through. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Still a road.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying the only people that really use it are them.
Only them.
Only them.
At the end of that one road, there's a woman that rents, that's a boarder, boards horses for people and stuff, so.
I'm not that familiar with it. I'm just looking at a map. I'm just looking at a map.
Right.
I mean, so that, I mean, that's not as compelling as some other areas where it would be on a road where.
Huge.
Further down the road, there's other people that have public access. I get that. But even in this case, I think it, the goal is to bring our roads. I know, I know, I'm just, I'm just giving the, kind of the counterpoint to it, that I think every one of the roads, it would make sense to do that so that we can pave them.
Well, obviously Keith would have to come up with something to address that at a later date.
This isn't the place to hash it out, but I'm just saying that in theory.
This is the place to hash it out.
Well, once we have a plan, it's the place to hash it out.
Right, but let me ask you a question to see debate for the council. If the council desires, we could send these homeowners a letter. Rod will tell me, I'm sure, the dollar amount that would be charged based on the linear footage to them, and write them a letter saying, in the event you do not agree to dedicate the required property, we will be still paving this area anyway. And we will be billing you annually for the next 20 years, the cost of such improvement. This is your time now to dedicate. If not, we will proceed accordingly.
I mean, I stated my position on it. I know it's not normally the way we go, but this.
Listen, it's part of your Tisdore project.
It's part of, it's part of, it's the right thing to do.
It's a way, it's a way to make it happen.
It's the way to make it happen.
But they're not going to look at it like that. They're being forced to do something when they moved out here and.
I get it.
Being advocate of that, being a big advocate of that, you know, they don't want to. Gary brought up a good point, you know, they're at the end of a cul-de-sac. What's it going to hurt? Leave it alone. You know, if they don't want to do it, I don't know, I don't feel it's right to force somebody unless it would, you know, like if you were on a regular road where there was no end or cul-de-sac, and these people all agreed and you got two houses in the middle, that's a different story.
That's more compelling.
Yeah, but at the end of a cul-de-sac, I don't know, I just feel like that one, you know, it's kind of being like a little bully. Well, you either do it or we're going to send you a bill anyways. You know, that doesn't.
Yeah, I get it. I get it. What, I'm just curious, so.
On the flip side, let me jump in real quick. On the flip side, if they sign over the rights, they also are not responsible for anything that happens on the road, and they're not going to get sued. The town is.
I don't.
So there's a benefit.
I don't understand why anybody doesn't sign it over, to be honest with you. I don't get that.
I just wanted to remind you.
I concur with that. I'm not an advocate for not paving it. I'm just pointing, I was just pointing something out, that this is not a through street, and if that's what they chose, that's what they chose, but they've got all the liability of that street.
Right.
And the maintenance.
Yeah. I'm just curious, Marty, I know you hate to do this, but I'm going to put you on the spot anyway, and I know you don't have the exact numbers, and I know I promised not to hold you to it, and what other disclaimer can I throw out there? But what, so for that, and maybe, Rod, maybe you can help out on this too, I'm curious to get an estimate of what the cost would be to do those, to do that additional piece, the other four properties.
I summon the help of the town engineer, Rod Lake, please. Specifically as it relates to individual components, but as you are discussing tonight, as Keith has mentioned, it's a long-range plan. There's a lot of these little pockets, and the loan and lending, we would have to deal with financing because the only method would have to come from unassigned reserves, either reserves or fund balance within the transportation fund or the general fund. So we could develop that based on your request, but I'll turn it over to the town engineer for now. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rod Lake, for the record, we just basically got a proposal from this contractor to do four lots, and it was about $62,000, $63,000. So if we use, if we use the same contractor, conceivably it'd be about the same. But if we wait and we go to a different, you know, we bid it separately, it could be a little bit more.
So what that comes to, dividing that by four properties, over 20 years is $787.50 a year.
For each property, all of them?
For each property.
For 20 years.
For 20 years.
Now, my only question beyond this particular one is the woman's house on the end, technically she doesn't really have any frontage, so the road actually ends at her driveway. So it wouldn't apply to her at all. It would only be the first three properties in front of her. Is that, is that an accurate statement? Just, okay, so in this particular scenario, because the road wouldn't go by her house, it would stop at her driveway, it would only apply to the first three properties. So it would be a little less money, but still divided, anyhow.
Well, I think, you know, what I would say is, I think that when we, you know, the bottom line is that, I guess, you know, from a town standpoint, this is just not something we would normally do. So I recognize that. So I'm certainly not going to push it. I've expressed my opinion, but there's.
You want to say for discussion another time?
There's a number of other things that I disagree with, but I recognize as a representative up here, I don't push it because it's not, it's not the will of the town, it's not the will of the residents. And so I wouldn't push this one either because I suspect this would not be the will of the residents, so. But I will say this, that I think going forward, we should make these calculations when we speak to those residents and say, hey, listen, this is another option. If you want to retain the right-of-way, we can still pave it for you if you would like, and, you know, you're going to need to pay. Assess you for 20 years. Assess you for 20 years for $750 or $800, whatever comes out to you for that, that particular property. So that they have a choice to choose from. We're not forcing them to do something, but at least then they have the choice. They can make a choice and decide if they would prefer to do that, recognizing that, you know, frankly, everybody has in different situations. If a homeowner, if you think about it, if one of those homeowners was planning on selling in a year or two.
Be an asset.
I would, I would want it paved in front of my house. I'll pay for that for one or two years to maybe get an extra $20,000 when I go to sell my house. You know, it, everybody would look at it in a different way, and it may be yet another way that different folks can, you know, make a choice.
Yeah, well, other ones flat out may not just be able to afford it, so.
And they just may.
Yeah.
And remember, nobody actually has to pay it. They can always just turn over the right-of-way, too.
No, true.
And it's free.
Right. It's part of your bill anyway.
Yeah, they're paying for it anyway. That's right.
Right, right. Well, it's, you know.
So, I think that's.
Listen, it wasn't an item for the night, so to speak, but I would tell you that we should probably add it in a meeting for a discussion item moving forward.
I agree.
To address it more clearly and get more residents out, get some residential input so we can see what they think and feel about it. Because I think it's absolutely a benefit moving forward to getting everything paved because where it's checkerboard on a main thoroughfare is huge problematic.
That's a problem.
So. Keith, what's your thought? Gary?
No, I was just going to mention that, yeah, I think it'd be a future discussion item, how to deal with that in an intelligent manner, you know, and so we don't knee-jerk it or anything like that.
Right.
And, you know, and every, and I think every situation is probably going to be unique. And like this one, we thought it was four properties, probably very tiny bit on the fourth property and mostly the first three. But the last person's going to get all the benefit. So how do you deal with that, you know? You know, so, I mean, there's some complexities here that we're probably not taking into account, and I think we'd better, be better off. I don't want to hold this project up by.
No, of course not.
And, you know, and we're moving on to the 188th repaving in another year or so.
Right.
And so I want to make sure that, you know, goes through, and, but as a future discussion item, I support it wholeheartedly.
Okay, Keith, what's your thought as a future discussion?
No, absolutely, Mayor, and thank you for the debate. That's what we wanted to hear, to see if there was consensus, and there's not, so that means future discussion is warranted. But I just a suggestion, you may, when this item particularly comes up, you may want to invite these four homeowners to a council meeting and have them speak to you directly as a whole body on what they would like to do. Because in other cities, you know, Hollywood, for example, when the road gets to a certain point of disrepair, they're going to be cited by code enforcement, and they're going to have to pay for it all themselves. So, you know, they have to, I don't know if these residents actually understand.
Well, in this particular item with these four properties, I know two of them are arch-enemies and they're neighbors.
Let me ask, let me ask a further question. Has this ship already sailed?
No, no, because you've approved a item tonight.
We haven't voted on it yet.
No, no.
No, but I'm, but after tonight, I'm saying.
Yeah.
No, you voted to at least pave one through six.
No, no, that we did.
Right.
Question, I just.
So, you know, you're currently skipping those four, but you know, there's no doubt if you get them in at the next council meeting, or at least invite them to come discuss the item before you, if they agree at that meeting, it's simply easy to do motion for reconsideration and add the four in.
Well, you can't because they're starting on Monday.
They're starting the entire repaving project?
Well, no, that, that particular road, I think.
Yeah, that's what, that was my question.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
The project itself kicks off on Monday. I'm not sure what, how they've arranged their schedule yet. I don't know that Rod knows that. They're starting on the south end and coming north, so, but it's certainly a very tight schedule. There's very, very limited time here for this project. And I do agree, I think, what somebody said before, on a through street is a little bit different than a cul-de-sac as well.
I don't even think it's a cul-de-sac.
No, it's a dead end.
It's dead end, just stops.
So, yeah, so I think probably this ship has sailed, but we still need to do the, we should still.
Apparently.
Work on our policy here.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, a discussion moving forward, without a doubt.
And you may want to just have a sole purpose workshop for that.
Absolutely. Yeah, makes sense.
It's easier than.
Okay.
All right, so back, back to.
We called the vote on the last.
It's already been voted on, Mayor.
All right. I wasn't sure because I thought Steve had a comment. We had a first and a second in public. I didn't remember going through the.
We're good.
The lineup, but okay.
All right.
So we did.
Item thirteen through fifteen, now I can say what I was going to try to say, were all items where you have asked the MPO for recommendations. We could have written them all up in one resolution, but to clarify them and make sure they each stood on its own, we separated it into three resolutions. So what I'd like to do, with no objection for the councils, have, because they're all sort of related, have Russell read all three into the record, and then you can debate them all as a whole and do one.
And vote them as all.
And vote them as all.
Okay.
First item is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, respectfully requesting the Broward County Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO, to amend the long-range transportation plan to widen Griffin Road from Southwest 184th Avenue to US 27 to a four-lane roadway, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to help effectuate the amendment of the trafficways map and providing an effective date. Item fourteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, respectfully requesting the Broward County Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, to amend its long-range transportation plan to include bicycle lanes on Griffin Road from Southwest 184th Avenue to US 27, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to effectuate the amendment of the trafficways map and providing an effective date. and providing an effective date. Item 15 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, respectfully requesting that the Broward County Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, amend its long-range transportation plan to include increasing the capacity and widening the Weston Road Bridge at Griffin Road, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to effectuate the amendment of the trafficways map and providing an effective date.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. All three.
All three. Motion to approve.
Public comment?
Bob Hartman, President of Country Estates, HOA. Thank you. I mean, we've asked for this, this has been discussed, I think, since I moved here, 25 years ago, yeah. I mean, Griffin Road has always been a hassle. Fortunately, most of it has widened. This is the last piece. Country Estates requested this, I believe, a year and a half ago, two years ago. Thank you. It's dangerous out there. If you guys go out there on a Sunday, you're battling the parishioners. If you're out there at 7:30 Monday through Friday, you're battling the high school traffic out there. Widening the road is, is really long overdue. And the bike lane, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for both. Widening the bridge, great, too.
On this, I would hope that you would bring up that this isn't just for the service of Southwest Ranches. It really serves, I can tell you, there are hundreds of bicyclers that go by me, and then they go around every Saturday, every Sunday. They even meet at the, at the, the school. And they're not from our town. They're not, they ride out this way. And if they had a safe bike trail on Griffin, you'd see them go all the way out. I don't think they would ride on 27, but they might turn around and come back this way. Also, the school is out there. You, Weston really should get on this boat with us. I mean, they should get on board because Weston has all that traffic that, that dumps on there, too. And then, of course, we don't expect much support from Pines, even if it is their stuff that's there. But definitely, I would think Weston would. Thank you.
When it comes back, we're going to get back to.
John Eastman, 188th Avenue. I spoke to Maria's mother yesterday, got an update, and she's now starting to walk with help. So she's going to have years of therapy. That's the girl that was run over in the bike lane on, after Thanksgiving.
Wow.
So she's coming along. A lot of components here to talk about. The bridge has been a nightmare for years. It's way over capacity. The larger trailers, the 60-footers, have a hard time negotiating that turn. They've taken the guard rail out many times. So, you know, punching one, maybe two lanes on there is the way to go. That will go with the component, hopefully, of getting the county to work with the state on the revision to our exit. Maybe put it back the way it was with a dedicated Weston Lane to turn north. I think, you know, if we hear something from the MPO on the bridge, maybe the state will listen. The bike lane, it's been long overdue, great. I have mixed feelings about Griffin Road widening, but we definitely need it. The numbers are there. They have been since the school opened. And once again, this is something that was not our doing. Pembroke Pines punched the road through, connected their neighborhoods with Griffin, and then we got the school. So we probably have about 5,000 more cars in the morning and afternoon than we had before. So we're definitely over the, the number count that makes it justifiable to do it. One thing I do appeal to you is that let's keep a tight rein on the landscaping and not put in a type of landscaping that's going to have pumps and a lot of maintenance like we have on the rest of the, the Griffin out there because it's going to be a huge added expense to the town to take care of it. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? See, no additional public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to us. Freddie, well, Freddie wanted to go first, sorry, dear.
Go ahead.
Well, I don't know how many of you people have been following it, what's going to be happening up in Holiday Park, but there's some big plans for that park. And at that meeting, I brought up trying to get that part of it widened. And because I tell you what, if you haven't seen it, you need to go take a look at it.
Where's that, where's that display at?
Well, they have.
Or they have it out of the park?
I don't know. Is there one out there, Bobby?
I haven't seen it.
I don't know if they got one out there. They had public meetings on it.
Okay. I missed that. But if we throw in, I, I guess when we, I, you can argue at MPO and tell them that when they're doing the, that they're doing the park and the increase, so.
Yeah, there's more of them than me, though.
Right.
They outrate me. That widening of that road, it is long overdue. And as John said, the traffic has increased considerably. It will help everybody. It'll help Weston, it'll help us, it's going to help a lot of people. What I am confused about is, is the bike path. I took a ride today, and I took a ride all through Davie, old parts of Davie. And there's some sections where it hasn't been updated. And the bike lane is in the far right. You have your right turns, and then you have your bike lane. When I see these bike lanes sandwiched between two cars, this is the way I look at it. This car here swerves because somebody runs him off a road, and he hits the bike, and he's hurt. But now he's dead because this guy here runs right over the top of his head and squishes him. I still can't get that. And I wish somebody could explain to me why you would put a little bike in between two cars. It was like when you, you grew up, you always rode with the traffic. You go with the flow of traffic. My daughter rollerblades, she rides her bike, she jogs, she does all this. And she doesn't do that anymore. She is so afraid of somebody coming up behind her that she doesn't know. The only thing she said, I need to get one of those things that go on my head with big rearview mirrors. But she takes and goes with the traffic now so that she can see who's coming. At least she has some chance to jump off to the side of the road or whatever. And it did happen to her going down Hancock Road. There was some construction going on. I happened to be in front of her passing because we were checking something out, the garbage Nazi guy and I. And this guy sees this kid rollerblading, and he's not giving an inch. And the next thing you know, we see her off the side of the road. I said, turn around and go back. You know, we were far enough ahead where, you know, I couldn't catch him in time. You know, he got out and everything. Because if I would have caught him, you know, God help the poor guy. But I still can't get that concept of why you would put a person and a bicycle in between two motorized vehicles. Somebody needs to explain that to me. It just doesn't seem safe at all. I mean, I get nervous having a car whiz by me on one side, let alone you have it on both sides of you. So, so why would we even want that there? I see an accident just waiting to happen.
Okay. Anyone else? No one else? Call the question again.
Councilmember Schroder?
This is for all three, correct?
Yes.
Well, I'm in favor of the, the widening of the road, just not the bicycle lane.
You can separate it if you desire.
Well, I'd like to separate it. I definitely want that road widened. So it would be yes on the widening and no on the bike lane. And yes on Weston Road.
So yes on 15, no on 14, yes on 15.
Yes. Correct.
I'm ready. Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes, on all three.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes, on all three.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes, on all three.
Mayor McKay?
Yes, on all three.
Motion passes. All three.
You want me to?
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to Planet RV in the amount of $16,400.00 for the rental of two travel trailers to serve as temporary housing and other miscellaneous costs in the amount of $17,443.00 associated with the relocation of both the Town of Davie Fire Department and Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Rescue, Inc., approving a budget amendment in the total amount of $33,843.00 and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? See no public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to the council. Discussion on this item?
Mayor, I, I,
Go ahead.
I know Councilmember Breckus had a, had a question before, so obviously, this would be the time. I, I could answer probably most of the questions you have, and Town Engineer Rodley's available as well for whatever questions council may have on this item.
Right, I didn't really have a question. I mean, because we've, we've talked about it in, in detail. I just thought that this would be an opportune time to kind of, since my article is not going to be 100% accurate, this would be a good time to kind of lay out the land of what's happening and the timeframes and, and where we are.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may?
Go right ahead.
This is very much a moving target, and Councilmember Breckus alluded to his article and the concern with that. As you all know, we're getting ready to replace the two modular units that currently exist at 172nd with a single, larger modular unit. So during that construction time, we, we have, obviously, the firefighters need to be somewhere. And so we started to work on some alternatives for that. We want to keep them out in that geographic area so that their response time in the area is not negatively impacted. But we've got to hold a, certainly a certain standard for facility for them to, to be housed. And so from a cost-effectiveness standpoint, what we arrived at after a lot of discussion, a lot of different options and running down different items, was to rent two different fifth-wheel trailers. One for, one for Davie, one for the volunteers, so, so that they could have appropriate temporary housing. Then the discussion became, where do we put them? And so it looked at, if we have to vacate that site because it's going to be a construction site, where do we put them? What town-owned facility do we have potentially that's available? And we started to discuss the Country Estates Park as the nearest viable location in which to do that. Obviously, there are concerns with the park. You really don't want to take the park offline if you don't have to. There are benefits in leaving the firefighters at the current site where they are now. And we've been diligently, I, I know for Rod and Emily, it's very time-consuming on a daily basis trying to run this further down. We could be more specific with more time, but we don't want more time. We want, we want to move this forward. We want to get the approval to, to get those trailers rented. So we're going to get them rented. We've determined that we now have the ability to put them on the current site at 172nd, that we will not need Country Estates Park. There's some logistics that we need to work through on some of the costs. But what was given to you in this item was a worst-case scenario as far as what those costs would be. We're renting the trailers for three months. It's a three-month contract because the week-to-week contract, with any delays, would have cost us more than the three-month contract. So that's why we're doing that. Realistically, it, it's our hope that this is four to five weeks, potentially less if things go quickly and go smoothly. But realistically, we're probably looking about four to five weeks. So the modular units that are out there continue to deteriorate at a rapid pace. We just want to get this project started as quickly as we can. So from a staff standpoint, our, our goal is to do this at, at the present site, to do it as quickly as we can. Those numbers that are in there as far as electric usage and those other things are really calculated based on a three-month timeframe. So we, we do expect those costs to be less. We do not expect them to be more. Like I came back before you earlier on, on the warranty. I don't want to do that on the relocation on the fire department. I want to make sure we get it right where we bring it in at less. It's my expectation we'll be able to bring it in at less. But we, we do need your approval tonight to, to move forward, get this project going. Is that sufficient?
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody up here? Call the question.
Mayor, if I may. One of the things that we had in the resolution that just needs to be addressed is that, that the time, as, as the town administrator indicated, this was a worst-case scenario, and we were kind of exploring all the different options. The current resolution, as it's been presented, has Country Estates still listed in there. Obviously, that's not the case at this point. So we'd like to just entertain the motion to, to amend the resolution to remove that whereas clause.
Okay. Okay, so I'd amend, amend my motion to remove the one clause that has to do with relocating to Country Estates Park.
Thank you.
Whoever seconded it needs to.
He just wants whereas removed.
I know, but whoever seconded it needs to second that motion.
Freddie did, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead and call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, urging the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, to change FEMA's policy requiring preapproval for disaster debris removal from private roads and to treat disaster debris removal from private roads and residential communities in the same manner as public roads for the purpose of FEMA reimbursement for disaster debris removal costs. Directing the town clerk to distribute the executed resolution to certain agencies in each of the municipalities in Broward County, providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Looks like.
I third this. Having lived through the private road scenario, this couldn't, this, this needs to happen because it was really a pain in the butt. We're knocking on doors. Nobody else in town had to do this other than the private roads. We had to make sure all of our neighbors signed a little permission slip. I get the reason why, but to me, this was totally unnecessary, even though it was required by FEMA. Thank you.
Yep. See no additional public comment. Public comment is closed. Back to us. Nothing else up here? We're good? All right, call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Breckus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Andy, you up? Marty up? Who's up here? Er, Russell's up.
Yeah, I, I can give a, a brief introduction, Mayor. As the council is aware, in January of each year, we're supposed to do a, a review by contract of,
Should be changed to February, at least, but anyhow.
Or March or, or second meeting of March or when the first, whatever.
Or March or, or second meeting in March or when the first, whatever. Of all the charter officials of the key...
Can you make that change happen in these contracts? Because we always end up bumping it down.
Yeah, we will.
Okay. Because it's crazy after the holidays and everything, you try to make that happen in January. Just not.
I know of one we have to bring back in December 2020, so as a result of the review period, this year unfortunately got pushed out. And as a result of that, we've had now several meetings where we've discussed the item, including special meeting for the purpose, but never at a direct council meeting. So unfortunately, there were issues that kept delaying and delaying it, and so apologize for that. Where we were last at when we discussed this item and when you spoke about the individuals was essentially, we were given a sheet from town administration that was prepared that showed the packages paid to surrounding municipalities, essentially. I think most of the municipalities in Broward County. Obviously, there's argument in the council then, and I don't need to rehash this again, but there's arguments whether or not that survey had any validity. Some state that it should have only viewed like-sized municipalities, which I think was one. Others suggested, no, their competition is the remaining municipalities in Broward, so all of them have to be reviewed. The goal tonight is not to re-debate that issue, but to, once again, confirm what we have spoken about over past meetings regarding the charter officials. Where you were at, based on a review of 2017, was that it was essentially unanimous that you all believed that both Andy, Marty, and Russell did a wonderful job in 2017, added sufficiently to the reserves of the town, and that the town was managed well and proper. And as a result, it was unanimous belief of the council that the charter officials deserve some additional compensation for the incredible year that they had. Based upon the review of all the analysis around us, where we were at was twofold. The town council believed that the retirement benefits that were offered to the town were a little bit lower than industry standards. And as a result, the town council desires to increase that number by 3% as a retirement benefit. Just to remind everyone on the debate on this issue, by increasing retirement benefit means that if an individual or charter official leaves the town at any point during the year, that payment stops, so it's technically better than a bonus because of the fact that a bonus is a one-time payment. This is paid out over a course of a year, and as such, if someone left, they wouldn't be entitled to any more than what they worked at the town. So as related to the retirement benefit, the desire was to increase it to 3%, which would make a retirement benefit in the town a max of 10%, but the charter officials have to match up to 5%. Is that correct? 5% of that number to make, or entitled to match up to 5% of that number. As a result of that, that's much more in line with at least a retirement benefit given by others. I know that Marty, who has told me he'll be here for life, is very appreciative of that additional 3% number. As it related to the bonus, all town employees and including charter employees are budgeted up to a maximum of 5% bonus a year. While the employees themselves are left to the discretion of the council, it is a budgeted number that is put in every annual budget. The town council, when reviewing this, said that based upon the incredible year in 2017 that they believe both Andy and Marty deserved their budgeted bonus amount of 5%, and that's here for your approval and discussion tonight. As it related to Russell, they believe that he deserved no bonus. As it related to Russell, what the discussion was that in lieu of bonus, Russell acknowledged that he was okay with, and please correct me if I'm wrong, taking that 5% and adding it to his salary, which is, again, better for the town, because if Russell chooses to leave, the town wouldn't be paying out the full amount. Keep telling you now. And as a result of that, it would just be a 5% on his salary itself, moving him up essentially $5,000 in salary for next year, but getting no bonus for 2017. So all three charter officials are up for your consideration, but if that behooves the council, that's what the motion would be. Once again, for the public, I know the council knows this, but the charter officials are lockstep in terms of the retirement amount, meaning that you can't say your administrator gets 3% and your financial administrator gets 3%. Everyone has to get the same amount, which is how the 401K plan works, and that's why everyone goes in that same degree. So it's here for your consideration, Mayor.
Any public comment on that? Seeing none. Public comment is closed. Back to us.
I guess, first of all, I'll make a motion to approve those increases, the 3% increase for the retirement, 5% bonus for Andy and Marty, and a 5% increase in salary for Russell.
Okay.
Second.
Beyond that, I just wanted to say a few words about the team that's in place. I think that we are exceptionally fortunate to have the team that we have. I think that they, when you look at what a town of our size has been able to accomplish in a short period of time, what we accomplished in the past year, given there was a hurricane in the middle of it, and the way that, you know, we remain on solid financial footing, we've taken on new projects like the GSI project and all the time that was put into that from Russell's standpoint, the financial from Marty's standpoint, and frankly, Andy pulling all the pieces together and keeping everybody working in the same, you know, working together to accomplish the great things that we've accomplished. It's a testament to these three individuals, and it's a stronger testament to the staff that you've put together and all the work that that staff has done, really pulled together in one direction consistently to get us where we need to go. So I just appreciate all the effort that you guys have done, all the hard work that you all have done, and the way that you have worked with our residents and staff is truly appreciated. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just ditto.
Just ditto? Listen, I've got to tell you, what a great team we do have, and what a great manager we have. I got to tell you, we've been blessed when we got Andy. So I want to thank Andy and the team, and Marty, and Russell, and all you guys, and the rest of the staff, all of you all doing a great job. So I'll tell you, we're very fortunate, and wow. I'm just glad I wasn't on this commission early on when they had to go through all the other stuff they had to go through, so I've been blessed in that regard. So I hope we can keep this team together and keep it going. So I'm good. Dee, you want to say something?
I don't have to take blame for anything, because I don't want to take credit for anything. I'm excused from it all.
Okay.
Yeah, plug a chair. Amen. Just want to say ditto to what everybody has already stated, and we are indeed fortunate that we have this team put together, and they do work in a cohesive manner. It's more than us five up here, five ships sailing in one direction. We determine policy, but the nuts and bolts, the day-to-day, the counterchecks, the, you know, cross-referencing, the checks and balances, that all happens amongst these three individuals and the staff out there, and none of this happens in a vacuum. Everybody needs to understand that. And, you know, it's everybody pulling on the oars in the same direction. And, you know, it's a superb job, and they need to be rewarded when that happens, and that's our role up here, which we are doing now. So I just want to make everybody rest assured that that's how we look at it. We are rewarding outstanding performance.
Yep.
That's all.
And Marty, don't forget about our annual, you know, get-together here. Once a year now. I heard it's going to be once a year now.
Yeah. You must refer to that party.
The party.
Wow. Okay. Anybody else? We're good. We got a motion in a second. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroder? Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor FitzKelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor, if I may?
Go right ahead.
I would like to thank you all, certainly for the support that you give to me, to the rest of the staff, for allowing us to do here what we do. I told you in my very first interview almost six years ago that I believe government was a team sport, and it's just, I've got some great teammates on the council and on the staff side. Well, it's nice to be acknowledged for my efforts. Boy, without the staff and without the leadership, the guidance, and the support of council, we would not be where we are. So I thank you for that, and I do want to thank Keith as well for his efforts, and let's just keep it going. Thank you.
Amen. Awesome.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
All right. Adjournment. We're done.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.